To order at 7:10 PM.
I've just got one, but I've got two on the way.
Microphones on.
We have a ready meeting.
Yeah, so when are they?
April and May.
Nice, springtime.
It'll be almost May. Yeah, well, I only know one, March, April.
Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting of the Amherst School Board to order at 7:10 PM. Before we begin the public hearing, there's a matter that the board needs to discuss in regards to the default budget calculation. In light of the South Heagan Board's recent vote regarding this calculation, I'd like to have us have the opportunity to discuss this again. I will remind everyone of our earlier decision to calculate the default strict adherence to RSA 40139B, which defined, which defines the default calculation as less debt service and other legally contracted obligations, less any one-time expenditures. I'd like to discuss the possibility of delaying action on this change until we have an opportunity to conduct further analysis, and I'd like to have the board have an opportunity to discuss this.
Sure. Yeah, so I think that, so I'll start. I think that originally we had, when we had the conversation about the default calculation, right, that the thought process was strict adherence to the RSA, strict adherence to the law, and we had all agreed upon that. After talking with members of the South Heagan, as you said, talking with the members of the South Heagan Board, I don't know if the community is comfortable with that yet, given the fact that we've done the default calculation for the same way 13 years. So it's probably in the best interest of us to, you know, do it the way we've always done it. But my recommendation, I'll see what the rest of the board thinks, my recommendation would be that, you know, by the April or May timeframe, we, we could, maybe, I don't know if we consult an additional attorney, or we get a pulse from the town, or what we do, but we have a definitive answer on how we're going to calculate the default next year before we get through half the year. That would be my...
Does anyone else have any comments on the matter?
Yeah, I do, actually. I agree that we made the decision based on strict adherence to the RSA. If there, we received opinions, received consult from lawyers, at least two different attorneys, but I think it makes sense, given the South Heagans, how they're going to calculate the default this year, they're going to stick to what has happened in the past. I think we can move forward this year with calculating in the traditional sense, not necessarily strict adherence to the RSA, but traditional sense, and I propose that we get the findings in writing from the attorneys, as well as have a chance to evaluate the default calculation and make a decision by the end of April about how we're going to handle the default calculation. That way, long before we even start next year's, the FY 18 year, before we even get into the fall, before we even finish for the year, we have made this decision in preparation of our start next year.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I would agree with Jim and Paul, just that we need to make a decision sooner, not, not wait to decide this till we're in the middle of budgets, but then also, you know, prior to beginning the next budget season is just maybe offering a little education at one of the board meetings, just to reiterate the change and differences and how we're going to go forward to just make sure we're in line with the RSA.
Any other comments?
I'm wondering if we may want to consider pushing that out just a bit. April, we will have a new board with some potential turnover, so maybe give a couple of months. Would you consider May perhaps as a better date? Because potentially we will have some turnover in the board.
I would recommend at least by the end of this budget year.
Yeah, so if it's, if we're pushing it out, I'm fine pushing it out, and that's a good, good point, Amy, thanks for bringing it up. The, as long, for me, as long as before we hit our summer session, we have made a decision. And to me, it's, this is a legal issue, and it's how we are going to address or adhere to the legal issue. So I'm comfortable saying that this is really about investigating further and getting the legal findings in writing more than opinion. And so let's, let's get, get that information and make a determination.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think the end of May is fine.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Okay. So, did you guys want to make a motion? A motion that we ask the administrative business officer to receive written legal opinion of the default calculation RSA, you know, the law for the RSA, and to present how the default budget is calculated and what those findings are to the school board by the end of May, for the board to vote on for the FY 19 budget.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, motion passes. Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to now open the public hearing. Good evening, my name is Amy Facy, and I'm Chair of the Amherst School Board. Thank you for coming tonight, we welcome you and appreciate your participation in this process. Before we get started, I would like to introduce the other board members, Vice Chair Jim Manning, Paul Prescott, Beth Kuzma, and Galen Trombley. And Peter, our superintendent, if you wouldn't mind introducing this table.
Thanks, Amy. For those of you that weren't here at the first meeting, I want to make sure you know that this, this meeting is being livestreamed, as is all of our board meetings as well, so if you want to look at board meetings, you have a little free time. They're archived on our website as well. I'd like to introduce a few people for you. I'll start with SAU personnel, far left a few way, Bruce Shakerin is our Technology Director for SAU 39. Christine Landwirle is our Director of Curriculum and Professional Development. Meg Beauchamp is our Director of Student Services, and John Robichaud in the back is our Director of Buildings and Grounds. At this table, to my right, is Danae Mella, who is our Minutes Taker, Jerry St. Armand, who is the Principal for Clark Wilkins School, and Porter Dodge, Principal of AMS. And I am Peter Warburton, the School Superintendent.
Thank you.
And Adam Steele, who's sitting to my left. Can you imagine, I forgot Adam?
Thank you. I would also like to thank the Amherst Ways and Means Committee for their time, effort, and commitment. Their task of analyzing all areas of the budget is challenging, and we appreciate their hard work. Before we begin our project, or our presentation, we want to share with you some highlights from this year, as well as some plans moving forward. Over the last few years, we've organized our work based on specific commitments to our stakeholders. This year, we reorganized our work to reflect our commitment to the pillars and core values of the SAU 39 Strategic Plan. The five pillars of the Strategic Plan are Advance, Connect, Invest, Streamline, and Unite. Advance, pillar one of the SAU Strategic Plan is Advance. Our goal is to prepare our students to compete and thrive in a continuously changing technologically connected global marketplace. The Amherst School District is committed to rigorous academic standards for all students, engaging instruction, and authentic forms of assessment. This past, this past summer, our teachers and administration began a deep examination and revision of curriculum and assessment in all major content areas to align to new standards, and we have continued to work diligently towards providing curriculum reflective of 21st century learning for all students. Some highlights from this year include full-day kindergarten. This is our first year implementing full-day kindergarten, and we are very excited to have this program in place and provide our youngest learners with the time necessary for their academic, social, and emotional development. We would like to thank Principal Jerry St. Armand and all of the kindergarten teachers for their work so far this year. In literacy, teachers and staff participated in a summer institute to redesign the curriculum framework in preparation for the school year. Their work continues throughout the year during late starts and teacher-in-service days. Work has also begun with the new social studies standards to realign the curriculum. In STEM, teachers and staff engage in extensive science and math curriculum work this summer. In math, the focus was on further refinement and tightening of our rigorous math curriculum to standards, and in science, we have created a new science curriculum for grades five through eight that is aligned with the new next-generation science standards. This new curriculum is supporting the development of our STEM program through project-based learning and integration of engineering and design. Assessment. Assessment, as defined, is the process of gathering and discussing information from multiple and diverse sources to develop a deep understanding of what students know, understand, and can do with their knowledge. This process culminates when assessment results are used to improve subsequent learning. The Amherst School District currently employs two major national assessment tools, NWEA and SBAK, also known as Smarter Balance, as well as additional local assessments used to gather data to improve student education throughout the year. The NEWA MAP Assessment is taken by students in grades K through eight at least twice a year. It is used to measure and monitor student growth and achievement. Our students are continuing to perform well above national norms in both reading and math. The added benefit of this assessment is that teachers and administration can access a wealth of data based on student performance to make on-the-spot curriculum and pedagogy adjustments throughout the year. SBAK is the statewide assessment given in the spring to students in grades three through eight in math and English Language Arts. This year-end summative assessment provided information on student progress. Last spring, most grade levels performed well above the state average on math and English Language Arts. As we continue to improve the alignment of standards, curriculum, and implementation in STEM and literacy and social studies, we anticipate improved results in this assessment. Our district is also involved in PACE, Performance Assessment and Competency Education. This is a first-in-the-nation alternative accountability system, which includes a reduced level of standardized testing, along with locally-developed common performance assessments. Amherst is continuing as a Tier Two PACE District, following South Heagan High School, which is a Tier One District, in receiving deep professional development in the areas of competency education and performance assessment. The Amherst School District is committed to utilizing these assessments appropriately to measure student performance and growth, and ascertain where we need to improve. Connect. The goals of Connect are to create learning opportunities that extend beyond the walls of our schools and engage our citizenry, civic organizations, local businesses, and alumni in supporting and promoting our educational system. Following last year's successful effort by the board to acquire the Babuzyk Lake Road property for use by the town, the Recreation Department successfully repurposed that land to create a bike pump track, and we look forward to the opening of the DIS golf course this spring. We are proud that our efforts and partnership with the town has resulted in this additional recreations, recreational space for everyone's enjoyment. We are also extremely proud of our new makerspace located in the Innovation and Design Wing at the Amherst Middle School. This collaborative effort between the Amherst School District, community members, and the Recreation Department has created the ultimate workshop for our community. The makerspace is open to the public during non-school hours to use our state-of-the-art tools, share knowledge, work on projects, network, and build things. This program has no impact on taxpayers, as membership fees feed back into the program for equipment and supplies. BAE has also recently augmented our inventory of equipment and supplies with a generous donation. This is currently the first community makerspace in a public school, and we would like to thank everyone involved in making this project a huge success. Invest. Investing in our staff, facilities, and infrastructure is the goal of this pillar. Over the past few years, we are proud to have acquired top talent to fill our newly redesigned positions at the Amherst Middle School, including Dean of Instruction and the Dean of Students. We are also pleased to celebrate our teacher at the Wilkins School, Liz Alexikos, as a finalist for Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to her. The Innovation and Design Lab at the middle school has continued to evolve, and all of our middle school students continue to rotate through an applied program in STEM with the experiential learning and topics, including engineering, circuitry, and physics. We would like to especially thank Principal Porter Dodge and Steve Opry for their exceptional work on this project. At the Wilkins School, our second, third, and fourth graders continue to learn and experience programming through their computer science rotation. Teacher mentoring. In response to the need to provide new teachers with in-house professional development, we launched a teacher mentoring program this year. This structured program provides new teachers with a mentor to assist them with a variety of topics, including parent communication, building procedures, classroom management, and data collection, to name a few. This year, we have also expanded our athletic and extracurricular and co-curricular programs, including a new middle school lacrosse team that begins play this spring, as well as a strings program at the Wilkins School. Our students continue to experience our expanded co-curricular after-school programs, as well as our A and B athletic teams at the middle school. We have continued to maintain and update our facilities and address areas of concern. Last year, we unexpectedly had to replace the gym floor at the middle school due to serious safety concerns. We were able to fund this project using surplus funds, as well as funds from the Capital Expenditures Reserve Fund. We continue to focus on other areas involving safety, health, and wellness, and ADA compliance. Streamline. The goal of the streamline pillar is to consolidate processes and resources across the districts and SAU to become a more efficient and effective school system. A committee of community members, administration, staff, and board members conducted an extensive exploration of district consolidation options and the associated educational and financial effects. Their work was compelling and provided the SAU Board and individual boards with a basis for further analysis. Next steps will be to engage the public, gather feedback, and determine a course of Special education. The State of New Hampshire DOE has implemented a 10% tuition increase in FY 17 for out-of-district placements, which will significantly impact our budget, as you will see later in the presentation. As a way to respond to these rising costs, the Amherst School District was recently approved by the DOE for Phase One of a program to create in-district capacity to meet the needs of students with intellectual impairment or autism. This program will reduce our out-of-district tuition costs and contracted services, as well as improve the quality of education for our special needs students. Additionally, in response to rising costs for contracted occupational and physical therapy services, the district was able to identify a cost savings measure by hiring 1.6 staff equivalents while significantly reducing contracted service costs. Unite. We have worked on several initiatives to adopt an SAU-wide unified program this year. Teacher leader effectiveness and evaluation. We are currently in year three of implementation of this program, and our evaluators have become more efficient and effective in their employment of our observation tool, which is called the Thoughtful Classroom. According to a recent survey completed by staff members, the informal and formal observations received has increased significantly since the program's inception. There is more written and verbal feedback provided, and more teachers indicated that the feedback they are receiving is specific and actionable, and it has helped them to determine an area of growth or area of strength. The Assessment, Grading, and Reporting Committee was launched last May and charged with examining assessment, grading, and reporting across all schools. The goal of this committee is to make recommendations to the boards on grading philosophy, aligning assessment and grading within a competency system, and designing a reporting method that effectively communicates status to all stakeholders. In addition, our staff continues to collaborate with many stakeholders in SAU 39 on a variety of projects and committees that serve to improve the educational experience of our students. We are especially excited to have the teachers of the Mont Vernon Village School join the teachers at Clark Wilkins during late start professional days to achieve greater alignment So this year, we engage in negotiations with both the Amherst Support Staff Association and the Amherst Education Association. For the Amherst Staff Association, Support Staff Association, we agreed to suspend negotiations. Discussions ended amicably, and this was a mutual decision based on the priorities of both parties. Negotiations will resume next year, with a working session being planned to begin late We will not be bringing forth a warrant article for a teacher's contract this year with the AEA. This is the second year that we were unable to reach an agreement. We began negotiations in September with the goal of finding common ground with our teachers' union. It was the board's priority, as it was last year, that this agreement include changes to the current retirement benefits and healthcare options. The issue at hand is significant. Assuming every teacher retires at age 65, the district has a liability of approximately $10 million for the teachers currently employed. Additionally, the structure of the retirement program and the annual cost of these severance payments limits the number of teachers the district can afford to retire, thus inhibiting the natural attrition of teachers. The board proposed a solution to address the retirement issue, as well as an interim proposal to work jointly towards a mutually agreeable solution. The details of the problem the board is addressing, as well as our proposals, are outlined in a public statement, which will be available for you at the end of this program. We remain hopeful that next year, an agreement will be reached. So we view the SAU 39 Strategic Plan as a living, breathing document used to inform the important work of providing the best education possible for all of our students at the most reasonable cost. As a school board, we work very hard to achieve our goal of excellence, but we can always do better. We have recently begun a process to align the work of our district with measures and outcomes. Our work ahead will involve a refinement of our mission and vision, as well as determining measures and outcomes for our schools using a variety of indicators based on our values. When this process is complete, we look forward to sharing this and other relevant data with all of our stakeholders through what we are calling a data dashboard. We also understand that the value of the education we provide comes at a cost. The challenge for us is to find the balance between providing the highest-quality education at a reasonable cost to our taxpayers. To that end, Jim Manning will now present the financial side of this equation and the budget. Thank you.
Okay, so, who's driving the ship? All right. All right, so my, my job tonight is to review the budget, and what I'd like to do is just start by wrapping it up in a theme. So when the school board comes to the town with budgets, historically, there's a couple of different ways you can look at that. In the past couple of years, we have come to the town proposing strategic budgets. So strategic budget, meaning there are new enhancements, new changes, or whatever, that we are proposing contained inside the budget. So an example of that last year was full-day kindergarten, okay? So that would be an example of a strategic budget. I have to underscore for everyone, given the budget I am going to put in front of you, the board felt it best to not put a strategic budget in front of the town this year. Instead, what you're going to see tonight is an overview of a maintenance budget. Maintenance budget, meaning we're just, we're just running and maintaining the railroad, okay? And that's, that's what, that's the main theme I want everybody to walk out of the room with tonight. Excellent. This is the operating budget warrant article, which will be on the ballot. So the budget that we're currently proposing is $25,427,899. If that budget is defeated at the polls in March, the default budget will be $25,573, sorry, $25,573,646. So you'll notice that number is actually higher than the proposed budget, and that default budget calculation is actually the calculation that we've been using for the past 13 years, not the new calculation. So what you see in front of you now is, you know, it's the, it's the, it's the beginning or the thought process in terms of how we get there. So there's been questions I saw earlier tonight from folks in the audience, how does the board arrive at a budget that I heard during the South Heagan session? So one of the main places you start is simply by looking at staffing, or looking at enrollment, and then matching it up to staffing. So what you'll see from the chart here is that, going back to FY 2005, we had a heck of a lot more students in this school system. And when I say school system, I mean K through eight. We had very nearly, I think about 1,700 students going back that far. Over the intervening decade, we've lost a lot of students. The good news is, is that when you look at, and I don't know if you can, if it's pointed out, right where that line, the, the staffing line comes in, the blue line, it touches just to the top of FY 17. Where you see that staffing line, things start to, things start to plateau a little bit, so that when you get out to out-years, like FY '24, FY '25, and '26, we actually are starting to see, or can make projections, rather, to see that the enrollment in some of the lower grades is starting to stabilize. So we're seeing about 130 kids per class, I'm just talking about Amherst now, down first, second, and third grade. So a lot of the conversation you're hearing at the high school is how enrollment is dropping, and enrollment is dropping, well, we're, we're a predictor for what the high school will like in, look like in out-years. And so what we're seeing is that when you get out to FY '26, '25, '24, and work it back, things are starting to, things are starting to stabilize. So where we are now is FY '16, and right now, we have about 1,248 students with 83 teachers. And that works out from a very raw, it's about a 15 to 1 ratio. So the budget, we begin that process by looking at staffing and enrollment to figure out what that number is going to be. Next slide. So from there, we can look at the budget composition, so based on the, the number. So what, essentially, what do, what do we have to work with in terms of dollars? So this is the, I think this is the toughest part when you review a budget, especially when you come onto the school board for the first time, the toughest part to understand, especially if you think, you know, like you heard during the South Heagan... especially if you think, you know, like you heard during the South Heagan session, if you think the budget's too high, there are a lot of moving factors in the budget of a school. But at the end of the day, you're offering a service. So most of your money is really wrapped up in people, because people was what makes the whole thing work. So when you look at the composition of the budget here, 76% of that is in staffing and benefits, is in salaries and benefits. So 76% of your budget is locked into a contractual agreement. And so in years, when you don't have an agreement, there's not a whole lot you can do about that. Now, some people would say there's nothing you can do about that, but, you know, when you have contractual obligation, the only thing you can do if you want to affect that number is to lay people off. And so that's not necessarily something this board wanted to take on with this particular budget, simply because if you look at our staffing and enrollment, we are actually, we've actually done a good job of matching our enrollment with staffing. So we feel like we've done a good job there. The other piece to the budget is non-salary obligations. So there are other contractual obligations. In this case, the orange part of the pie represents 19%. So there's a number of different things in there. One of the biggest things is transportation. And that leaves you with 5% of what I'll call unfettered discretion. Unfettered discretion, meaning there's not a lot holding us back from a contractual standpoint in terms of borrowing from Peter to pay Paula, or however you want to describe it. So that's essentially our place to work in, that 5%. So that's the budget composition picture that we want to make sure we paint. We're working within that 5% wedge. Next slide. Okay. So, budget story. So having talked about enrollment and staffing, we've talked about the budget composition, where do we land? So for nondiscretionary items increased by the budget, we actually saw a $1 million increase this year. So when I say nondiscretionary, I'm talking about some of those contractual obligations, those long-term obligations that I was talking about. That represents a 4.19% increase. On the discretionary item side, so that's that 5% wedge that we have to play, the board worked hard with the administration. We knew that $1 million number was going to be really tough for people to swallow. So we were able to reduce the discretionary side of the budget by $251,744. So that's a 1%, a little bit over a 1% decrease to the budget. So that makes the total increase of the budget $780,519, or a 3.17% increase. Okay, next slide. So we could break that out a little further. When you get into a little bit more of the details, we actually rank ordered this chart, and excuse me a little bit, I don't know sometimes whether I need glasses or I don't need glasses, I'm in that in-between stage. But if you look at the top header, so I'm three columns over at the very top, that number, $621,962, that's benefits. So your benefits impact can be broken out in two areas. The first is in healthcare costs. Another is retirement costs. So at the very top of the driver for this budget, we're seeing increases in healthcare costs, and we're seeing increases in retirement costs. When I say retirement costs, I'm specifically talking about increases from the New Hampshire retirement system. The line item just below that, almost $200,000 increase in transportation costs, and then another, well, $180,000 increase in tuition. And if you look down at the bottom, there's some other, there's some other negative totals there, which add up to the $780,000 addition to the budget that I referenced. Adam, you want to go to the next slide? So let's just get into a little bit more details there. So some nondiscretionary highlights from the table I just showed you. And I'll just go through these one by one. The biggest one was health and dental insurance. We saw a $329,000 net increase in health and dental insurance. We also saw a $291,000 net increase, give or take, in retirement, which I just referenced in the previous table. We also saw a $245,271 increase in special education and tuition services. And we also saw a $190,336 increase in transportation contracts. So when you add all those things together, it gives you an increase in our budget of about $1 million. Go to the next slide. In terms of discretionary highlights, the only increase to our budget this year, and I want to highlight the only increase to the budget this year, is, I know we have a number of different things that are listed here, but we do have a $60,700 increase in science textbooks. And that's due to the next gen, I think actually Amy mentioned it in her presentation. One of our goals for FY 18 in September is to launch a new STEM curriculum based on the next-generation science standards. So in order to do that, we do need to purchase some new textbooks, specifically in the area of science. So when you look at all of those discretionary items, aside from the increase in the science textbooks, we were able to cut $125,000 in equipment. We were able to cut about $160,000, give or take, in staffing. And there were some other cuts here and there that totaled about $27,556, which brings to that $251,774 decrease to the budget in that discretionary part of the budget, that 5% wedge. Adam? So next, I just want to cover just a few highlights regarding some of those discretionary changes in a little bit more depth. First, staffing changes. So fortunately, unfortunately, when you work in a school, as I said before, the main driver for your costs are people. People is really what makes schools work. All of your money, most of your money, is really going toward hiring great people to deliver good education, and that's in salary and benefits. And we have great people delivering great education in these schools. But when you want to bring the cost down, some of the areas you look to are staffing. Okay, so we have made some staffing changes for the FY 18 budget. They include eliminating a preschool coordinator position, eliminating a .6 FTE in special education at the middle school, reducing tech support at AMS, requiring increases in paraprofessional support in AMS nursing. And lastly, and I know that we've been working pretty hard on this, a change in the delivery of special education services resulting in about a $76,000 decrease. So what people might not know is that a lot of times when you get a child who needs special education services, many times you will tuition them outside of the school for those services. And I know our special education, Meg and the special education department and the middle school have been working really hard to figure out a way to bring some of those students back into the school system at a reduced cost, and said, we've done that this year, and that's part of the discretionary points that I reference here. So, bottom line on the budget is as follows. FY 17's adopted budget is $24,647,380. We have those nondiscretionary items, those contractual obligations, of about a $1 million increase. Looking at the discretionary items, where we were able to cut, we were able to cut about $251,774. That makes the FY 18 proposed budget $25,427, sorry, $25,427,899. Okay, I think we'll have Paul up next, right?
Yeah. All right, so I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the tax, revenue and tax impact. As in all other years, our school district budgets are put together as required by RSA 32.5. Basically, this means it's a gross budget. Amherst School District uses a gross budget where expenditures and revenues are considered. Revenues or expenditures minus the revenues equals the local tax impact. So some of those revenues include local revenues, state revenues, federal revenues, and adequacy aid. So, am I on the right side? Yep. I think so. Good. So revenue projections are flat, which normally I'd say, oh, geez, revenue projections are flat, but that's actually good compared to the previous year where they dropped dramatically. So, but that assumes some things, such as it assumes modest unassigned fund balance, a slightly higher adequacy aid, and a slightly conservative local revenues. The tax rate impact for our budget is about 48 cents per thousand. So for an average home of $352,000, the average tax increase is $168.96. So again, the impact of our expenditures minus our revenues comes to 48 cents per thousand, or for the average home in Amherst of $352,000, it'd be $168.96 for the Amherst School District operating budget. This next slide talks about the tax impact comparison, and really, it talks about, looks at what I just talked about, but through the lens of broken down by the tax impact per major line item. So the budget itself, you can see that it's an increase of $803,519. Again, this has to do with the million dollars worth of increase that we, those nondiscretionary, reducing about 200-plus thousand for the discretionary comes to $803,519 increase, which accounts for about 46 cents. Then we have the revenue, revenues and credits. You can see that reduces slightly. Adequacy aid and reducing about 10 cents. And then we have, that gives us our subtotal of about 45 cents. And then we have the special education warrant, which would add about 3 cents. And that gives you your 48 cents per thousand. And I believe Beth is going to talk next about the default budget calculation.
The default budget calculation is a legally defined calculation as identified in RSA 4013-9B. The calculation takes last year's budget as a starting point. From there, it removes any one-time expenditures. This year, that is not the case, there are no one-time expenditures. Takes all contract obligations into consideration, such as a contractual increase in bus transportation, and any increase or decrease in debt services. This year, the debt services happens to be a decrease. This year, our contractual obligations add over $1 million to the budget. This includes almost $330,000 to our health and dental insurance. Health trust sets this rate based on past insurance use, and this year, our district was given an increase of 16.7%. About $290,000 in our contributions to the state retirement fund. The state mandated a 1.5% increase this year, meaning in fiscal year 18, 17.36% of all salary pay will be going to state retirement, to the state retirement fund. Another $245,000 to the special ed services and out-of-district tuition. This includes a state-mandated 10% increase to out-of-district tuition, as well as any cost we project for all of our current special ed students. And a $190,000 increase to the transportation contract I mentioned earlier. As discussed in our meeting prior to the public hearing, in the past, we have removed positions from the default budget that were not being proposed in the proposed budget. Questions have been raised about the legality of this practice. However, since this has been done in the past, and that is what the voters are used to, and to remain consistent through all districts in our SAU, we have agreed to continue with that practice this year. We'll research more and get written options, sorry, written opinions from multiple lawyers. We will reach a final decision of how to handle the default budget in the future by the end of the school year. That being said, at this time, our default budget calculation comes to $25,573,646, which is still $145,747 less than our, sorry, more than our proposed budget. And Galen Trembley will be speaking to any other warrant articles.
So there is just one additional warrant article on the ballot this year, Article 13. If you want to go to the next slide, thanks. The warrant article reads as follows. Shall the Amherst School District raise and appropriate up to $50,000 from the year-end unassigned fund balance surplus, if available on June 30, 2017, to be added to the Amherst School District Fund for Educating Students with Disabilities, previously established in March 2014. Majority vote required. The current balance in this fund is $150,000. This fund was established in 2014, March of 2014, to deal with unanticipated expenses associated with educating students with disabilities, such as new student moving into the district. So we establish our budgets based on our current population and our current needs. So this is to help cover unanticipated expenses should new families move in with students with disabilities that need special education need to be sent out of district. So as stated in the article, the amount is only funded if there is a surplus available on June 30. The board expects to continue to add to this fund until there is a balance of $250,000. At this time, I'd like to ask a representative from the Ways and Means Committee to comment if they so choose. Thank you.
My name's John Glover. I'm a co-chair of the Amherst School District Ways and Means Committee with Frank Brown. And I just wanted to say publicly that Ways and Means has not taken any vote yet on whether to support or not support this budget, because quite frankly, there is no budget yet. We're here to observe and see where the process has taken us so far. I can say that, at least for myself, and I think for other members of the Ways and Means, that we found the budget review process to be very collaborative with the, not only the school leaders, but also the school board members. And just by way of example, the transition between a first-round proposed budget and a second-round proposed budget, we asked questions. The questions were taken seriously, and the result was about a half a million dollar swing from about a $250,000 increase in the discretionary spending to what we saw tonight, which is about a $250,000 decrease. And so that $500,000, or five, yeah, $500,000 swing came about through our collaborative discussions, and we were very happy to see that. Another point that I wanted to make about that process is we asked very specifically and pointed questions about staffing, because as we saw tonight, staffing is a huge driver for the budget. And at least with respect to teachers, I personally, and I think others are as well, although they can speak for themselves, because as I said, we haven't taken a vote, are persuaded that, at least with respect to teachers, that there is a tight, yet right, balance between the number of students and the number of teachers that are currently proposed in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. It's now time for public comment. Would anyone like to speak?
Frank Brown, co-chair of the Ways and Means. I'd just like to reinforce everything that John said. I think we found the discussions very direct. Any data we asked for was readily given, talked back and forth, and there were a lot of detailed comments. I'd just like to reinforce some of the things I think Jim came up with in terms of, if you were to try and reduce this budget, you're dealing with personnel. And the good news is these... And the good news is easy to see there, the bad news is very difficult challenge for the board and for the community to deal with. But, I mean, I'll tell you, the personnel costs, salary plus, especially this year, the benefits are really, really becoming a burden. And so, I think some of the disagreement, if there is any, with the Ways and Means, would some, some of us, me being that person, there may be others, would be more aggressive, not necessarily around reducing people, but reducing some of the personnel practices that affect those costs, like who is eligible for benefits and who is not. Because there are a lot of people where the salaries of some people are in the twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar range, but the benefits are thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars. And so, those costs add up very quickly. And so, if you, we are serious over time about dealing with the costs, there are ways to do that without necessarily eliminating people. But we are, I believe, at the point where those difficult decisions are in front of us.
Thank you for your input, Frank.
Larry Ballard, fourteen wins a drive. It is interesting in a meeting to, and one here, one hand here, that people are what makes the whole thing work, and then a few minutes later to be referred to as a burden. My question is a point of clarification on the slide that was marked discretionary decision points. I saw in there, there was a one-point-six FTE reduction in teachers. What I did not see was the additional point-five FTE reduction in a computer teacher at the middle school, and I just wanted to confirm if that was still part of the budget plan.
Yes, the slide said a reduction in technical support at the middle school. It didn't list a half FTE.
And my question for Mr. Dodge. Mr. Dodge, this year, is enrollment at middle school at or above projected enrollment?
Currently above. We were at five hundred and ninety-one projected, and I believe our numbers right now are around six thirteen, six fourteen, I think.
And do we have a projection for next year's enrollment?
That will be around six hundred and five.
So, my correct understanding, we're looking at a enrollment that is relatively comparable, but we're still having a staffing reduction in teachers at the middle school?
It's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Would anyone else like to comment?
I just had a quick, sorry, I just had a quick question. Lisa Eastland, Ontario River Road. Jim, you had mentioned this was not a strategic budget, it was a maintenance budget, but we're introducing a new STEM curriculum that's costing us sixty thousand dollars in science books. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but to me, that's a strategic curriculum-based initiative. So, I'm not sure how that fits in with the, this is a not strategic budget. So, just clarification.
I, well, you can answer that, but I think.
We needed the science, we needed the science books anyway, and I think that the fact that we have a STEM program they're trying to launch, which was something we had been planning for, not just this year, but in previous years in September of eighteen, doesn't necessarily make it strategic. When I say strategic, I'm saying, hey, let's, fold a kindergarten, that's strategic, you know, or, you know, if you, yeah, I'm talking like major, major initiative. Sixty thousand dollars is not a strategic spend. And the point I'm trying to make is that when we looked at this budget, when you get hit with a million-dollar increase in budget in a single year, that, I'm trying to send a signal that we know that's not, not a year to be taking on major initiatives. Yeah.
Thank you. Maggie?
First of all, I wanted a clarification, but you did clarify. So, you're using the old default formula?
Correct.
Okay. And you're going to review it to see if you think that position is legal or not legal?
Correct.
Okay. Number two is, as many board members know, I'm actually in favor of an inverse class size, where the class sizes at the lower grade levels should be smaller than class sizes at the higher grade levels. Because I think, you know, the, the smaller the child is, they need more attention until the child becomes an independent learner. And one thing I'll say about staffing is that, yes, those costs that you're showing us are just, are non-discretionary, but headcount is not. And I wouldn't say, let's get rid of the teachers, but here's, here's a proposal. We have twenty-one classroom paras, and I don't know where they are, but I know six of them are in kindergarten, okay? Because I was at a board meeting where that was discussed. So, every single classroom in kindergarten has a para in it. So, there's two adults in the classroom, and there's currently twenty-one children in a classroom. If you were to increase the sections by two sections, and I don't know if the physical facility will allow that, but I'm putting out a scenario there, your class size would be reduced to sixteen students, and you might save the taxpayers' money by getting rid of all of the paras. The paras, as Frank said, their salary and benefits, two paras equal one teacher. If I get rid of six paras, I'm going to save the taxpayers' money, and the class sizes are going to go down, which is going to benefit the students. The health insurance for the paras, which I published in the December Amherst Citizen, if you haven't read it, is as high, is actually the highest employer cost. It's higher than the AE professional cost, it's higher than the administrator's cost, the employer portion for the health, for our support staff. And it's, the whole cost is like twenty-five thousand, and the employer cost of it is eighty-six percent of that. But the actual cost for that plan that they're getting is the highest, it's actually the highest in town. It's higher than the, the highest in the schools in town. It's higher than Sauhegan's, it's higher than the others in Amherst. So, I'm lost for small class sizes. If you had sixteen students, I think a teacher could handle sixteen students in a classroom. And when I was young, if you needed an extra adult, you asked parents to volunteer, and there were always parent volunteers in the classroom. So, I don't know why we need a para in every single classroom. And if, Jerry, if you could tell us where, where these twenty-one classroom paras are, I'd appreciate that. Where, what grades are they located in? And I'm not talking about, I want to clarify, I'm not talking about special ed paras that I know are assigned to kids. These are classroom paras. I counted twenty-one in the budget.
Can I? So, you're right, six of them are in kindergarten. Other classroom paras are in positions like library. Some of them are connected to special education, so they are supporting special ed students in multiple grade levels, not necessarily assigned to a grade level like the kindergarten paras.
Okay. So, if it's only kindergarten, then the other option is, which may not be able to be done this year, and I understand it, but do we need full-time paras? I, I came originally from New Jersey. I asked my sister, who's a teacher in New Jersey. Where the trend is going is that part-time paras, where they switch the paras, they move them around without benefits, is where a lot of districts are going. So, I think that's another option. If you need the paras, then have part-time paras, but don't give them twenty-five thousand dollars worth of, you know, health insurance, because they're covering their whole families. And we, the taxpayers, on the outside, taxpayers are, they're absorbing themselves, those health increases that, you know, yes, they're, they're absorbing a small portion, but they're, they have so much paid for, and I think these are, in my opinion, I, I have a very high deductible plan. These plans have a hundred-dollar deductible, or no deductible except for like medical equipment, a hundred-dollar deductible. So, they're very expensive plans, people are working just to get the health insurance, and I think we need to address that issue. Okay. And the last question I have is related to staffing at the middle school. In a, in a lower grade, it's very easy for me to look and say, okay, you have X number of sections, X number of students, I know what the class size is. But when you get to periods in the seventh and eighth grade, where they're switching all throughout the day, I can't tell what the responsibility load is for those teachers. And it relates to the same question for the people who are here at Sauhegan, that teacher-facing road, load, which means how many teachers are they responsible for grading at that level? You know? And is that something the board looked at, and do you know the answer to what the number is for the upper-level middle, upper-level AMS?
So, you're, what, you're asking?
Are they responsible for eight, well, at, for example, at Sauhegan, they have an eighty, eighty ratio, which means they are responsible for grading eighty students. That's what it, that facing ratio means grading. How many are they responsible for grading, interacting with parents, interacting with students? Do you know?
It depends, because in fifth and sixth grade, there are teams of two, and in seventh and eighth grade, there are teams of four. So, so it varies.
I, may I speak?
If you want to speak to that as well, Porter.
Maggie, the numbers, we, I want to say probably five or six years ago, Lucian will probably remember, we went from, we were always at the high school standard of twenty students face time, so we are, we had twenty students to a homeroom. We went to, about five years ago, to twenty-two, and that's where we're currently at now. So, a teacher on our team, unlike the high school, which would be eighty, ours have eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, okay. That's, that's.
Eighty-eight, and that's right across the board. But again, they're only the core teachers, because of course, a special ed teacher may be working with smaller group. But the classroom teachers, and I think it's important, thank you for bringing that up, because I've been around here for a long time, and I started in the eighty-one, eighty-two school year. And when I did, we had, in the fifth grade, we had six fifth-grade teachers, we had six sixth-grade teachers, eight seventh-grade teachers, and eight eighth-grade teachers, and that's what we currently have right now. So, we're, we're back to the numbers back when I started, and there were five hundred and thirty-five kids in the school. So, I think we've done a, a good job, and we do understand that our board's been incredible working with us, that we felt that we could move that up to.
No, that's okay. I just want to make sure it was at least around this eighty, or, you know, I didn't know how they, they were scheduled.
It is.
Okay.
And the twenty-two that Porter was speaking to is average classroom size, which is around twenty-two to one.
Okay. And then, the, right now, in eighth grade, seventh and eighth grade, you have a hundred and sixty-three and a hundred and seventy-six students, but coming down, your pipeline is one-twenty-nine in sixth grade.
We have Mount Vernon joins us, Maggie, so.
Oh, okay. So, that's another thirty.
That usually is what bumps us up to those numbers.
One-thirty, okay. So, then, do we expect this number to remain relatively flat?
Our numbers right now, as we said, we, we're above what we thought we were going to be last year at five ninety-one. Will be at six oh-five now, if you just count the number of children in the seats from Mount Vernon and Amherst will take us to six oh-five. And originally, we were projected for five ninety-six. So, we're above that even at this.
Okay. And I have one final question. Do you do analysis of people who are going to leave and not go to Sauhegan High School so that you, do you, that the numbers that you're passing to them are more accurate?
Yes, we do.
Like, do you, do you do a survey of parents saying, do you plan to send your kids to the high school?
It's not a survey, Maggie. What they, the children that are going to be applying, we use those numbers that they ask for recommendations, from teacher recommendations, and we send out information telling them that if they are going to or thinking about sending their child to private school or to another area, they need to let us know by certain dates, so we have those figures.
What are those dates?
Those are, it already passed, I want to say.
So, it impacts the budget? Would it impact, would it impact Sauhegan's budget?
Well, it will, yes, but Sauhegan knows our projected numbers as well. Peter has asked us many times, and Adam this year, to, to give those numbers. We have statistics on, even in some areas, whether they go to, because some move out. You know, someone could move, but we know the ones that are going to BG, or if they're going to go to Dairy Field or all that. That's all very public. Thank you.
What are your projections for these non-discretionary items for the next two or three years? Do you see a similar percentage increase?
So, we, we get, for the, the, the state did a rate adjustment, and it's done every two years for the health insurance?
For retirement.
I mean, for retirement. And, you know, so we just, we have to wait and see what it will be, so.
What is, what is your guess that it's going to be?
Oh, I wouldn't venture to guess.
Okay. Well, I know what my guess is going to be, so.
You know.
Well, I'm guessing you're going to say it goes up, but that does not always the case. I mean, we've had, have you, we have had years in the recent past where we've been surprised that it's dropped significantly.
For health insurance. I think we were, we were talking about retirement.
Retirement, yeah, well, retirement. Oh, boy.
Yep. Most likely retirement will increase.
Retirement will increase.
It will increase.
Most likely.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, you know, probably shooting myself in the foot by saying this, but talk to your state legislature about that, because.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to.
You know, it's, the, 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 the problem here is that several years ago, the state legislature said they were cutting the budget up in Concord, and they pushed all the money back to municipalities in this area. So, it comes sliding down to us. And so, they look great, and we have to figure out how to pay for it. And that's the case with the New Hampshire retirements. Well, that, there's a thornier issue with the New Hampshire retirement system, but that's the main, main thrust of it.
It's going to take a team effort, so anyway, thank you.
Amy Hanson, Patengale Road. I just wanted to talk about the full-day kindergarten and the, the staffing that's there. I'm a taxpayer, a teacher, a parent, and I have a kindergartner. And as someone who has been in the classroom when things are going on, I cannot say enough for the kindergarten teachers and how well they've adapted to the new program, as well as how absolutely necessary that these paraprofessionals are. Special ed paraprofessionals is absolutely not even a question, because it's our duty as educators to make sure that these students have the things that they need. But the classroom, I mean, I was actually a little bit nervous about having such a large number of students in a full-day kindergarten class, that's much larger than I've ever seen, working in Massachusetts or in New Hampshire. But, you know, I was a little bit nervous about going in, but after seeing what the kindergarten teachers and paraprofessionals deal with, just seeing the number of kids who had not been in a school setting before, and, you know, the amount of time they spent working on having children sit in a circle, sit in a chair, holding a pencil, you know, all of these staples, these foundational skills. So, it is absolutely crucial, and I would be nervous as a teacher, watching these kids come up, knowing that they weren't being supported like this. That kind of support is setting them up for success, and anything less would be we were not doing our duty as a school. And the paraprofessionals, special ed or not, they're not paid enough, bottom line. I know you're talking about their insurance costs, the amount that they're getting paid in their salary and the work that they do, whether it's wiping children in the bathroom, cleaning up vomit. I mean, I, I could not imagine taking home what they're taking home. So, I think that, you know, perhaps maybe you could get into the classroom a little bit more, see some of the roles that these student, these paraprofessionals are doing, and really take a look at kindergarten and what's being done there. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Any other comments?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a rebuttal. I think a professional teacher, if you were to increase class sizes, could handle sixteen students. I was an elementary teacher. I was certified in New Hampshire up into twenty, twenty-fourteen. I didn't do my continuing education, so it's lapsed. But I think a professional teacher can handle sixteen in a classroom, and you can use volunteers. Okay? So, and, and I understand the whole paraprofessional. Yes, it's not a salary issue. The salary is not, is low. I mean, it is. They're working for the benefits, but when you take two and you add them together, they equal a teacher, because the benefits are so high. And I have a whole issue with the benefits anyway, because the AS, the Amherst contracted benefits are higher than Sauhegan's as well, and there's no equity in this town. And that, I think, needs to be addressed. The only way, maybe it will get addressed if, if, if there's a consolidation. But I had one other question, and I forgot to ask Adam about it. The default budget is showing no reductions at all. There's only in one line, which is in the co-curricular. Everything is just an increase. So, you're implying that there's been never, everything that's in there is contractual. There's not been a piece of equipment that was bought for, that is not a contractual issue. There are no negative numbers in that column at all, only positives for the default budget.
Correct. We have debt services gone down, food service is showing a modest reduction, and as you mentioned, co-curricular things.
I'm, I'm, for example, you buy a piece of, you buy a coffee machine.
You mind if I finish, Maggie? Maggie, I'm going to finish, Maggie.
Okay.
I'm going to finish. Thank you. When I presented the default budget calculation to the board, I asked their assistants in helping me identify if there were one-time items in their proposed budget from last year that could be identified for this year. I went back through the presentations from last year to see if there were any significant equipment purchases or things that could be identified, and with the board's help, we were not able to identify any one-time expenditures out of last year's proposed budget. of last year's proposed budget. Thank you.
Could, could you, could you go back to the journal entries and look for them?
We certainly could, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Micah Killian, Tenel, Mount Vernon Road. I want to make sure I understand sort of the ecosystem that you folks are dealing with. When, I was at the, the meeting when the budget was first proposed to you people, and it was an oh-my-God moment for everybody in the room. And I remember Paul saying, well, we only control 20% of this, we're going to have to explain to the public what's going on here. And at first, I was thinking, you know, the board is responsible for 100% of the budget. You know, what is Paul talking about? And so I started looking into this some more, and I want to make sure I'm, I'm leaving here with the right orientation about what you're grappling with. The 75% of expenses seem to me all to be tied to the contractual agreement with the AEA. Right? And when you have these sort of innocuous lines up there that say, our priority has been retirement or healthcare costs in our negotiations, what you're trying, or have been trying to do is to say, a high percentage of dollars is going toward the staff, and now you're at the point of taking monies away from programs for the kids, because a lot of money is aimed, 75% is aimed at, at teachers and other folk. And the only way you're going to either lower the taxes for taxpayers, or shift more monies into programs for our students, is to find ways to work with AEA to bring what appear to be very rich compensation packages and benefit packages back in line. Is that a fair assumption?
So, we have a public statement that we have prepared to be available after tonight's presentation. So, rather than comment on that right now, we'll have that available and, and ask folks to take a copy of that.
Okay.
And then we can have further discussion at the deliberative on that topic.
I have a, one follow-up question.
Sure.
You used the word severance, that there are high severance costs.
Correct.
And I'm used to the word severance being applied to if you're terminating somebody, you might have a policy that says you get two-week severance pay for every year of service, something of that sort. I interpreted what you were talking about as payouts.
Correct.
Or bonuses. So retirement payouts at the end of a person's tenure, if they elect to retire.
Yes.
In the agreement, there's a whole array of different things, I believe, if I calculated it correctly, someone could get a payout over $90,000 in a number of categories for retiring.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And, and I know they queue up and wait until the next four people every year can do that. I just want to be clear that the word severance, that's what you meant by that. It was that accumulation of different payouts for teachers that get paid when, upon retirement. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Ballard, 14 Windsor. Just as a point of clarification, there are a number of things I've heard at the microphone, a number of things I've seen on there, that are assigning intent to the actions of what people are doing. And I think the intent that is being assigned is factually incorrect, and perhaps if folks on the stage or in the audience would have a conversation with people before assigning what that intent is and what people's motive are, there's a number of things that I've heard tonight regarding that, that are just strictly factually incorrect. And out of respect for the process, I'm not going to debate that at the microphone, but there are some things that I've heard and seen on the stage that, that I would strenuously disagree with. And I think if, before making those statements, if people would have a conversation with someone, and I get an understanding where from, because there's a number of things that are being put out there in the paper, in front of this microphone, and up on that screen, that are just not correct.
I'd like to, let me just take a minute to address the last two comments, maybe somewhat indirectly, so you forgive me. But, Michael, to, to address your comment, not with respect to the collective bargaining agreement, but I think that every single year since I've been on the board, we felt it's important, because we, you know, we'll get people come to the microphone and say, oh, can you cut here, can you cut there? And it's like death by a thousand cuts. You know? And it, it looks at the budget from a bottoms-up approach. Ah, you can cut a little down here, and you cut a little over there, and you cut a little down here. I don't know what that gets us. You know? I'm not really sure what that gets us. And, I mean, I, I've worked for businesses and whatnot, and typically what you do is you take a top-down approach. You figure out, what is it we want to do? If you want to lower costs, you change things structurally at the top, and it can filter down to the bottom. Otherwise, you're, you're, it's death by a thousand cuts. So, the point I think that we try to make here, and maybe we're just, maybe we, we dance on eggshells a little bit, because you've got a lot of different constituencies in the room, and in an hour, you don't know whether, you know, you want to make sure that you're articulating the right point. I think the point that we want to make is that, you know, we're not hiding a box of pencils in some back closet that we, we overspent on, or we bought one extra machine that we maybe shouldn't have bought. You know, the reason I think we put that pie chart up there is to remind people that the business of schools is people. And that decision points around reducing a budget in a town like this typically have to do with making decisions around, do you fire people, or don't you? That's not an easy decision, nothing to take lightly. We've got great teachers in this school system with lots of experience, who do a great job teaching our kids. And so, when you start to make decisions around, do you cut two teachers, three teachers, four teachers? Because to impact the budget, that's really what you're talking about, that's not to be taken lightly. You know? So, I think that when we put the pie chart up there, the reason we say 5% is because we want to make sure the town understands that, yes, we are 100% responsible for making a decision around the, the whole piece of the pie. But, that barring, cutting staff, and then potentially barring, cutting staff significantly in ways we feel could negatively impact the quality of education in town, you're dealing with, you know, discretionary, discretionary budget like this, that's small. And I, that's the, that's one of the main reasons we, you know, we, we put that up there. As far as, Larry, your concerns about, I forget what word you used, but I'm not really good sure what you're talking about, so I, I apologize. But, if you want to provide additional clarification, I think that, that would be fine.
I just want to bear that, I've done the paras and the actuarial statements that made me assume that these are part of our teachers, our retirees, not retired. That's a whole other conversation that I'm, I'm thinking of, that they're going to find that. So, just to follow up, Jim. I agree with the notion that you folks have done a very good job of keeping your staffing levels aligned to enrollment. And I think it would be a shame to start cutting substantially more staff, I mean, notwithstanding whether paras or some adjustment could be made there. It seems to me that the elephant in the room is such a big percentage of your dollars are going toward levels of salaries and benefits that you really don't have any control over, because those were negotiated in the past and voted on by us, the voters, and now you're, you're living with the, the limitations that are imposed upon you in that regard. That's, that's really the point that I'm making. In, in corporations, they can decide if health insurance is going up, that the employees are going to bear some of that burden as well. Okay? I suspect what's gone on here is, health insurance has gone up, you've got numbers like $356,000, and it is the school that is bearing most of the burden of that, because you're paying, as near as I can tell, and I'm, this may be wrong, but well over 80%, sometimes 90% of healthcare costs, vision costs, dental costs. So any dollar that goes up there, most of it gets translated into, you've got to find a way to pay for it. So that's the bind that we're in here. You're living under the, the limitations of a collective bargaining agreement that was proposed by some of the board members somewhere in the past. And those things, with the exception of pay increases, that won't happen if, if you don't renew a collective bargaining agreement, everything else in that agreement stays in force until something else is negotiated. That's the bind that you folks are in, and that's why someone like Paul will say, we only get to control 20%, right? That, that's the point I wanted to make, that the, the elephant in the room is that 75% of costs that are driven by collective bargaining. Some of you may have participated in collective bargaining in the past, and then, we, the voters, have to be smart enough to understand the implications of those collective bargaining agreements, because we can't, on the one hand, say lower our taxes when we voted for the very, you know, agreements that you're bound by. That was the point I was trying to make.
Thank you, Mike. I think we're going to take one more comment, because it's, we're at 8:30.
I don't want to steal time. I am Teri Beam, and I'm from Amherst, and I'm on the Ways and Means Committee. So I've become intimately familiar with this budget, whether I wanted to be or not. Well, I did want to be, but more so than I realized I was going to be. We'll put it that way. And the reason that I have become intimately familiar is because, just like John said, we were given full access and transparency, and I absolutely agree what you're saying, Jim, is that this, from both sides, is definitely a budget of needs rather than wants. All of the wants that were on the table are pretty much gone. Things like replacing books that are falling apart, that's not a want, that is definitely a need. The fact that it happens to fall in line with the STEM program, that's great, but that's not why they're being replaced. They're being replaced because they're literally falling apart, and you have to do that sometimes. If your car won't start, you have to get a car that runs. Those are the types of things you need. I am so thrilled that Amy came up here and responded to some of the suggestions that were being made on how many teachers you may or may not need in a classroom. I know that my daughter, my oldest daughter, is a teacher, and she works with three- to five-year-olds, and to suggest that she could handle 16 five-year-olds all by herself is ludicrous. I volunteer a lot. I work full-time, but I'm also on Ways and Means and a slew of other boards in town. I love this town, I love to serve it. But I'm on a lot of things, because there aren't a lot of other people jockeying to take those positions. We have trouble in every organization I'm in finding volunteers, and to think that you could find qualified, full-time volunteers to come and be with our kids, we have trouble finding people to fill in an hour, or two hours. We have to break it down to just send it into the office, you don't even have to walk in the door. There is no way that you can replace paid professionals, and we don't pay them enough, I agree, on that particular one, because they do a lot. And it, it gets offset by the fact they get benefits. So, sometimes with volunteers, you definitely get what you pay for. And you can't guarantee they're going to show up every day, because they don't have to. They're, they're there because they want to be there, and if they don't want to be there, they don't have to be. So it is ludicrous to me to think that you could replace people that are required and needed and paid by people who just, from the good of their hearts, feel like being there, because it's not going to happen. And neither should it. You should not take teachers and ask them to train the kids and train their helpers. So that is all I have to say about that. And I'm sorry if I sound upset, because I have become educated in all of this, and I am amazed at what you're able to do with what you're given, and I thank you. And I want you to know that when it comes to it, anything we asked of these principals, they said, without missing a beat, that they would give up anything on their wish list to keep the teachers that they have, because they are important and they are needed, and they are what is the lifeblood of our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Okay, sure.
Amy Hansen. I just wanted to point out, Mike, that I believe the con, the last one that was voted on contract that we're talking about now was two years ago, so those benefits were not 15 years ago, we're talking two.
Yeah, they were, that was in the contract, but it's been in the contract for a lo, very long time. It's a renewal of a clause that's been in the contract for a very long time.
All right. Thank you. With that, we will close the public meeting at 8:35. Thank you all for coming.